I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Okay, we have a few additions to the approved agenda, so we're gonna have an amended agenda. We're adding approved county group health insurance renewal rates for year twenty-two, adopt resolution twenty-two-one oh-nine, a resolution appointing temporary county registering commission, and third, adopt resolution twenty-two-one dash ten, a resolution approving a transfer of funds from capital project fund to debt service fund in the amount of forty thousand dollars. So with those additions, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Full move. Uh, second?
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve the minutes from five-three of twenty-one.
Yes, I did.
Go ahead.
Okay, okay.
I do too.
Okay, um, I'll make that motion.
Uh, I will second that. The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. General public concerns. I don't see anyone here from general public. They're still on Zoom. Nobody there.
That looks pretty good, though.
Okay, man, we'll start off with you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Got a couple items on the agenda today. Uh, the first item is to approve an application to work in the county's driveway for Dino's Road Dust Control. Uh, this is to do the application to dust control in front of K Hendrick's place on Quebec Avenue. They prefer the calcium chloride mix as opposed to the lignin sulfate. And we've done it for the last three years, I think, for them.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, second.
We have a first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we have...
Okay, approved pavement option number one for Matthew Construction for project FM dash CO forty-six, parent seventy-nine. Uh, double dash fifty-five dash forty-six.
Wow.
Uh, long... Basically, it's FM, parent seventy-nine is what we call it. Uh, it's the combination of the project of the Claire Road as well as C-twenty north of Bode that we did as an extra work order here back, uh, last month, I believe. Um, figuring in the quantities that they've done for the milling on P-twenty-nine as well as the start of paving on C-twenty, the total amount that we're looking to approve is one hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven ninety-two and fifty-one cents. That's one-five-five-seven-nine-two-point-five-one. C-twenty is moving along very well. They should be done tomorrow on that.
Rightly?
Yep.
Oh, wow.
We're just doing, we're just doing the inch and a half maintenance lift on this. The last two days, Thursday and Friday, they had very good days. Friday was an exceptionally good day.
And that's going all the way to?
To Big Night Point or to Highway fifteen. We're stopping just east of the radiuses of the turn for that. We're not getting into the intersection of the State's Road. Um, we are about two hundred feet west of the bridge in the north lane heading west today. We should get all the way to the end today, and then we'll back up to where we finished Friday, which is near between Colorado and Delaware, and then run that remaining two miles tomorrow.
It'll be done tomorrow?
Far in breakdown, they should be done with that stretch tomorrow.
Do we have to put a little rock along the edge?
And then the county is putting the...
Edgered it.
The edgered in.
Okay.
We're gonna put our edgered box in and, and do it ourselves. For what they wanted, to do it, it was...
It only makes sense.
Okay.
With it only being a maintenance lift, it's not, it's just like our regular edgeriding program, so...
There wasn't a lot of milling on that, was there?
No. Uh, we milled a header to start with. We milled both sides of both bridges.
Got a nice smooth transition.
Yeah, I'd say, I don't know if anybody's been on it and driven it yet, but the, the transition in and out of the bridges and where we start the project is very smooth.
Awesome. Awesome. Oh, maybe edgeriding, you know, where they have that concern, uh, just north of Bode veers off to whatever the Bode-Hoberton Road is.
Okay.
Make a little jog to the east. Make sure they get the, there tends to be a pothole. The intersection isn't really...
It always gets cut short.
The intersect, the, just the way it was designed, it, it really isn't wide enough, and with the larger equipment, semis and whatnot, they end up off of the asphalt and it creates a pothole. But they're gonna edge, I mean, obviously, they're gonna go right by it, and I'm sure they'll make sure that that's...
We've still got, uh, tapers at all the paved intersections to do. That'll be done tomorrow as well. Uh, the Bode-Hoberton corner.
Yeah.
Uh, both sides of the Odison-P-twenty. And then there's an additional paved intersection there in Odison that will be good.
Oh, so they'll do that inch and a half lift there, too?
Yeah, we'll do that inch and a half lift on all of the blisters.
Okay.
That should be pretty nice.
Yeah. Their rides are really nice, right?
Good, good.
I will make a motion on the, do you want the long or the short, just the seventy-nine?
Just seventy-nine, fine.
Or the one-five-five-seven-nine-two-fifty-one?
I'll second Bruce's motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any more discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we got discussion and action on improper driveway installation.
So I, I gave you guys a copy of the letter that we sent out here two weeks ago uh, with regards to, I think it was six driveways that were improperly extended. Uh, I believe the letter said, please respond to the county within two weeks to let us know what your... Just, uh, please respond to the county within two weeks to let us know how you're going to fix these changes. At this point, we haven't heard from them, which leaves us three options. We can send a second letter that says, uh, you've got two weeks to correct these issues, otherwise the county will step in. We can remove the driveway extensions and haul away the material with the pipe, or we can fix the driveways per county code and cash the checks that they gave for deposit. So, um, basically, it's item number two on our Humboldt County entrance policy that says, that says extensions shall be utilizing light material.
And this is a couple of those where they put a bigger pipe over the cement, is that...
I think it was fifteen-inch concrete, and they slid an eighteen-inch over the top on a couple of them. A couple of them, and I'm not sure how, uh, they extended fifteen-inch steel with eighteen-inch steel. So I'm not sure how you...
Transition.
Transition between the two of those. I haven't stuck my head or curled any of them. I'm just looking for guidance from the board on which route they wanna, wanna handle.
Well, if they're mismatched, they're gonna work out anyway, so send them the letter and tell them they got two weeks to fix it, or we will fix it. That's my opinion.
What kind of, uh, deposit checks did you get?
We get five-hundred-dollar deposits for each driveway. I don't know if they're individual checks or if it's one lump sum check.
Oh, okay.
Will that cover the cost of, if you have to make the improvements yourselves? Or make the change of them, or...
I, I haven't tried to figure out how many hours it would take us to, to basically pull pipe from this driveway and this driveway and maybe switch them, like if this is fifteen-inch concrete extended with eighteen-inch, and this is fifteen-inch concrete with eighteen-inch. Switch them so that you got all concrete and all steel. I haven't tried to figure out how much time it's gonna take.
Are you, is the concern the wrong size or the wrong material?
Wrong material. It's not wrong size. It's the fact that we make everybody else in the county extend their driveways with light material or tear out what they've got for pipe in.
And put all new in.
And put all new in. So...
It sounds to me like it's con, original was concrete extended with steel culvert. But yet, you could...
You could pull all...
You could tear that out and put in a brand-new steel culvert, and it'd be perfectly fine.
And it'd be perfectly fine, yep.
Or are we grasping at straws? I mean, I, I agree with Dave. I'm, I'm always, you know, we know about drainage. If you don't have the proper fit for tile connections, you can have issues because, you know, you don't have a fit. Or is it, you know, just to be fair, I mean, I'm not following the policy at all, but, you know, you could, you have concrete, but you're not extending it with concrete. But if you tore it all up or you put, just put in a new driveway and got the correct steel culvert, correct depth and all that, that's perfectly fine.
I think I would give them a month instead of a couple of weeks.
I mean, even if I put in two weeks, we're not gonna be there in two weeks to fix it, because we've got other more important pressing things to do than...
Right.
My question is, is if it, if it's concrete and you slide a tin whistle inside of it, it's a driveway that's, what, sixty, eighty foot wide?
Probably close to a hundred.
Hundred? Okay, so if he put three sections or two, I don't know how much they added on to it, so... It isn't like drainage where it's...
Sucking water all the time.
Sucking water all the time. And I guess, to be honest, I think it's their driveway. Let them sign off on it, that if it starts sucking dirt, you can fix it. We aren't gonna come back.
Well, they already do that because it's a hundred-foot driveway. The county doesn't maintain it. We don't have anything to do with it.
'Cause I know what kind of horniness we're gonna have when he gets his letter that it was, wasn't likewise material, 'cause I've already heard it.
But he, he was told...
I know.
Ahead of mind, this is what you gotta extend it with, and basically, he's just...
What are the precedent? You're gonna open up if, if you set a precedent where you're not... I mean, I'm not trying to be splitting hairs here, but in HR, you set a precedent, then you've opened the gates for anything different.
Exactly. I extended my driveway. I ripped the whole thing out and put all steel, and I could've just stuck a piece of steel in on each side, saved myself the cost of a...
Right.
...four feet.
I don't wanna poke the bear.
No.
I just, I just want, so when, when John Hugh Farmer, that doesn't have a specific last name shows up...
Yeah.
Agree.
How do I treat him?
You gotta treat him the same.
You do. I mean, that's why you set precedent.
Well, and that's why you have, have a piece of paper that says exactly how you're supposed to do it.
Years ago, when they built these driveways, Rick, none of them were plastic, or none of them, very few of them were tin whistles. They were all concrete. So now, when you're adding on to a driveway that was already there, it always has to be concrete, or else we're burying plastic all the time.
We don't use plastic on driveways, so...
No, no, I, I agree with that policy on the driveway.
Just because, yeah, people burn the... We allow people to burn...
Right. It's just, it's, yeah, I, I agree. And I don't argue light material, but I'm just, and I'm just looking at this generally as a common sense thing, kinda like Bruce is saying. Is it, you know, is it the fit or the material? Because you can put in a brand-new driveway with a steel culvert. That's perfectly fine. You just wanna do it correctly.
Yeah, it's not an issue of, of them extending with steel. It's, it's that they're not extending with light material, which is what our current policy is.
Right. But, so I mean, I just look at it on a common sense. It's, it's somewhat counterintuitive, because if they were saying plastic, we'd say, no, because, no, we just don't, that's not a good idea for driv, for driveway culverts. No, no, no. But you can use a steel culvert, and or you could build a new driveway today and put a concrete, you know, cement culverting underneath it, that's fine, too. But yet, you wanna extend it, you've gotta use what's there.
Then we need to change the wording in the policy.
So I mean, I just, as a common sense, and not playing favoritism, I mean, I'm all for sticking to the protocol and that, but is it just, is it, if it's a common sense situation, just wanna look at it on a common sense. That's why I asked if it was material, or the fit is the big thing. And a good share of these driveways, seldom if ever does water go through that culvert. And unfortunately, a good share of our culverts that probably sometimes could have water going through are flawed under a lot of driveways that need to be maintained.
Well, at this point, we wouldn't maintain it.
No, and that's fine, regardless, 'cause it's an off breed, off size.
And it's over...
Over our standard.
It's over the normal driveway.
Over fifty-foot top, we don't maintain.
Yeah. Well, that's already the case. I don't know. I, I, and yes, you do have to make it fair to everybody, and I understand where Ben's coming from. You can't, you don't, we ever wanna pick and choose, but it's just a strictly common sense way for anyone that might be, you know, adding on or hooking up to or whatever. That's the only way I'm looking at it, but...
Can I apply for a refund?
Well, that's...
Well, that's...
And you, you know, in all fairness, too, the ones that are smaller, uh, you know, the guys that are wanting to extend their driveways, like Dave Welter, uh, came in last week and wants to extend a driveway that we have issues with where it's sucking material. There's forty foot of concrete in that driveway right now. The county's policy is, because we maintain that specific driveway, we pull that forty foot of concrete out, that's sucking material. We're gonna put all new steel in, but we're gonna give him credit for that forty foot, 'cause chances are that concrete is unreinforced. It's an old enough driveway. So we credit them, the concrete that's there, and we put in sixty or eighty foot, whatever it is, of, of all steel so that it all matches. But I would think that's because we maintain driveways that are...
And you don't want a problem.
Okay.
Right. And it, two, where the policy reads in light material, gosh, it, you can get, I don't know how far people extend driveways, but if it were a concrete one, you should be able to come across the sections of the concrete pipe.
Just how the...
So I'm all.
Well, you're still, you're gonna have a lot of people that turn off of the highway, come down the hill and get all the way to Gosh Bridge and have to turn back and go up the gravel.
Yeah.
Because we've got the road blocked.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's still, what they're gonna benefit in a couple of weeks is gonna outweigh the...
Right.
Yeah.
Couple of weeks of construction will be good for the next twenty years.
Yeah.
You've got signs out on one sixty-nine, don't you?
We'll have to do a couple.
And they're signing on the ditch out on one sixty-nine saying road closed?
Yeah, I don't think, they haven't put it up yet because they don't want to jam.
No, it was down last night.
And they got a, the sign's already laying out at the drag strip, so they're all prepared to put their signage up. They just, the people are in a hurry and...
This is the drags open?
Drag strip's open. I think they had a relatively large event this past weekend. It was not out there, but I don't know if the rain delayed them. I think they were supposed to have like a pre-qualifying race or something out there on Saturday.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
No, like I said, uh, hopefully tomorrow we are done with C twenty, at which point we'll move down to the Claire Road. And we'll be down there the rest of this week and probably most of next week.
Okay.
So that's where the asphalt will start next?
That's where the asphalt will go to next.
Good. The milling areas would be done by quite end of the week, the milling?
The milling should be done by the end of the week.
Okay.
The mill will move on. They are in Iowa Falls right now doing the airport.
Then will they go over and catch the loop at Pioneer and then?
They've already milled that.
They, no, I'm talking Blacktop.
Oh, yes, yes.
While they're there, they'll...
While they're there, they'll hit that loop Pioneer and then they'll move to Gosh Park and basically just follow what the mill is doing.
Then they go to the drag strip and then they're done?
Yep, and then they go to the Hill East deliver more.
Oh, that's right. Forgot about that.
And do that quarter mile stretch.
Lots of activity.
Construction season.
Yeah, hopefully we'll be done with paving by Memorial Day.
That'd be nice.
Awesome.
Good projects though.
Everybody needs to pay attention and watch where the signs are.
Yeah. Most of these would be very short timeframe for...
Uh, I was up on Highway eighteen Friday and they were doing some spot, uh, filling of hammering parts out of the road. They're doing here and there, you know? And they had flagmen out and they had laid temporary rumble strips. I've never seen that before.
We've got them up on C twenty right now.
Do ya?
Yeah.
That's, I mean, it wakes people up. You hit those, like, what the heck's that? So at least they don't, they know something's coming.
Yeah, there are three of them usually.
Yeah.
Heavy duty rubber, so it's about an inch high.
I've never seen them before.
I've never seen them before. It's the first time I've seen them. So they're used them out here?
Yes.
Or up there? Great. It's a nice safety device. It's pretty inexpensive.
Slows everybody down.
Yeah. Basically just three strips of rubber they lay on the road. So, all right.
Anything else?
Uh-uh. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
All righty, we're gonna move on to Todd. We have a...
Morning.
Morning, Todd.
...a pool of grant resolution for the Three Rivers Trail construction.
Okay, I touched base with you, I guess it's probably been three, three weeks ago-ish, um, making you aware of a trail grant opportunity funded through COVID relief. Talked a little bit about what we should pursue or if we should pursue anything. Decided on paving the Three Rivers Trail, the north-south section of it. I guess, if you wanna visual, take one to pass it on. After looking at the application, I decided to apply for funding for, there's that little triangular offshoot piece. If we pave that, our grant will score better because at that point you're creating an at-grade connection with an existing trail, which will be the east-west portion of the Three Rivers. So that's why that's on there.
That makes it a little more, catches another level.
Uh-huh.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we score more points with that, so that's an addition or something we hadn't previously talked about.
Mm-hmm.
Beyond that, I think it's pretty much what we discussed. So today, I guess I'm looking for a couple of things from you. Um, as part of the grant application, I need a resolution supporting me submitting the application. And then on that resolution, it also talks about what, if any, money the county is willing to put towards that project. The grant application, you know, like I said before, we're not required to, to submit or to put any money into it. I mean, it's a hundred percent grant. But with that said, the more money you are able to put in, the better your odds are of potentially being awarded the grant.
We have a dollar amount on the grant?
I do. One point two-five million.
One point two-five for the grant?
And that's, like, that's all-inclusive. There's like two hundred thousand in the engineering and, I mean, it's a lot of different... And if you, if you're interested in breakdown, I think I have a copy of that.
No, but that's the total.
Yep, which is a little higher than I thought it might be.
Yeah, it's higher than the number I was thinking, but...
It is what it is. That would be a ten-foot wide, five-inch concrete trail.
Concrete?
Concrete.
Wow. Yeah. So you might as well start with that because the asphalt trails just do not hold up.
No. Bruce, I, I'll, I'll get an asphalt pull.
No, I'm just, I would...
Certainly about that, but if you've been on the cottonwood trail, uh, the asphalt doesn't hold up very well.
It doesn't. If you think that we talk about road, that's what we just did today.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's, for whatever reason, it's worse than that on a trail, on the asphalt.
Well, yeah, they don't have the, the...
They don't have the base.
There you go, asphalt. I was trying to think of, they don't have the base that the road already has.
Yeah.
And it's, it's so much of the road where you're at from concrete, it's gonna be more, but as you look down the road, your maintenance is gonna be a fraction of what it is with the asphalt.
Surely, surely this little, I mean, I don't know, it looks like it's a mile.
Two and a half.
Oh, it is two and a half mile?
Two point seven-five with that little offshoot.
Okay. I realize it's quite that long.
All of this thing that you added, uh, right here.
Let's see.
You're going...
That here from the original?
This would be more of this little offshoot.
Okay.
And I did that because now all of a sudden, there's an at-grade connection with this Three Rivers Trail.
Yeah.
So your grant...
Cause this was the original plan and then this was, that's why, I just wanna double check.
Yep.
And that, that makes it look better.
You will score better, yes.
It may not get here.
In black and white, making a connection with that other trail. There's another opportunity here, but it's really steep. You can't make that ADA compliant.
Yeah, cause there's a height difference there.
But it goes across though, correct?
Yes.
But what's gonna be the difference there, Todd?
Goes across the road, but you got one, one area, one under.
One, you go under the road.
Another opportunity to make that connection is there behind Carlson's store, Carlson Trucking, and that grant is thirty percent grade.
Okay. 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 This is, yeah.
You really have to lengthen her out.
Okay, I see what you're, I see what you're driving at.
Yep.
Okay. No, the at-grade is...
Yep.
Okay, I got that.
ADA just...
I got that, yep. Okay, no, thank you. I just wanted, I tell you, while we're looking, that's another...
Shouldn't have done a better job explaining.
No, 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 that makes, now it makes perfectly good sense.
One other question for you, Todd. He says a one point two million.
Yep.
The estimated cost of this two point seven miles is what, five, six hundred thousand? Probably.
Say that again, maybe I didn't follow you.
The estimated cost of doing this is one point two. Is that it, that much? I don't feel this, Ross.
Yep.
Wow.
So how does a county amount of money fit into this, uh?
Um...
Grants one point two. What are we, can you, can you give us kind of an explanation how this all fits together?
Again, um, obviously, I can try to scrounge some from my budget. I mean, we get refunds a little bit here and there every year. But you're looking at, you know, maybe I could throw twenty thousand at it. I would apply for a community foundation grant, which I think we have a really, really good chance at getting. But again, you're looking at probably max of twenty, twenty-five. You start adding numbers, um, you're getting up there into the forty to fifty thousand dollar range.
Well, here's maybe a useful way to ask the question. So it's a one point two, you're applying for one point two, right? Applying for the grant?
That's the total cost of the project. What I'm applying for will be total cost minus whatever we are able to kick in locally.
What, what you're saying is if we kick in some money, it moves your odds up?
Put that score up again, just like this connection.
Yeah, the three little things that's making you score better.
But that's the total cost. And I don't, I remember looking at this from the beginning, you know, this whole grant COVID business. Did, was there a percentage tied to that?
Um, the people that I've talked to ideally, like if you could throw twenty percent at it, you scored well.
That's what I'm driving at.
I didn't think it would be this much. I mean, I'll be honest with you, when I got that from the engineer.
What's twenty percent of one point two million?
Oh, boy, it's two hundred and forty thousand.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two hundred and fifty. That was awful.
Now, I'm getting to the point that that's the number you're looking for.
Fifteen percent would be hundred eighty-seven thousand, six fifty, ten percent would be hundred twenty-five. If you want to go, I'm not saying, I'm not trying, I'm not here to pressure you. I understand. I thought that's a lot of money.
It is.
But when they, when they do these grants, you apply for one point two-five and they put award, say seven hundred thousand, something, I mean...
Potentially, you, you could end up with a lesser amount than what you asked for. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what I, I guess I don't, just cause you apply for one point two-five doesn't mean that we're gonna...
At that point, Bruce, if I understand things correctly, we could then downsize our project. You know what I'm saying? Like maybe instead of two point seven, you'd go from Thunder Hill South or whatever. You wouldn't do that north section. We could tweak our project if they did not give us the four million, but that is a possibility, yes.
You kind of let that go without doing anything, uh, maybe don't get this at all, it's, you need to forget it, but otherwise you kick in more than we may be comfortable with. But you get quite a large dollar project to pay it for, well, let's just use the twenty percent.
And you think about kids rollerblading and things like that.
They get me popular. I know it gets used. Um, and I will say, I'm not here to pressure you, but if you tell me zero, probably not gonna get them.
No.
That's what I'm saying, but you know, I mean, you get, I mean, I think we all buy a vehicle if you're anticipating twenty percent of it.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe a poor analogy, but, um...
That's, that's a good example.
It's an example that, yes, you still have to pay the money and maybe you weren't planning on doing it, but eventually all this COVID money's gonna go away. And we're, we're gonna be paying for it forever, but it's an opportunity to get a very costly project done for still a very reasonable...
Well, I should add to the money if we were awarded, we'd need to be spent by September of twenty twenty-three. So we would be able to have two budget cycles to, I mean, if you wanted to kind of split up whatever you decided to kick in.
Chris isn't moving any easier.
Yeah, no, I know.
Play your timing and obviously...
It was a true shirt of a notice. I'm sure we all agree.
Well, yeah, and like you say, they're out there throwing this money out. Have no idea what it has to do with COVID.
But I told you, this is really geared towards communities, probably the bigger communities, that have a file cabinet full of projects that are engineered in their shovel.
Yeah, they're ready to go. They're just waiting for scramble through.
We'll be able to put something together and I feel like it is a strong application. But financially, it puts a smaller community or county like us in a tough spot. And that's just being born.
Where did it, what was the date? It has to be the, what year?
May seventeenth.
So what would the subcase and then what would be the timeframe that you'd know that? I mean, I'm just saying, if we threw a number and said a hundred and fifty, don't have a clue where we find that, but a hundred and fifty we can put towards it. Then we have X amount of time to try to figure out where we're gonna find a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Uh, we need the scoring. You will know the results sometime in August. I don't remember the specific date. But like I said, once you find that out, yeah, then you have to spend that money by September of twenty twenty-three.
You have to basically have the project done by September of twenty twenty-three. And if you've researched this, this twenty-one, what would your thought be on actually the, the project itself being done? I mean, when would it be initiated? Probably not this year.
No, it would be probably the spring of twenty twenty-three.
You think spring of twenty twenty-three, so...
Just in my mind, for the financial aspect.
Well, essentially, we're committing X dollars, whatever that X is.
Two hundred dollars.
And you've got until, we'll say the spring of twenty twenty-three to have X dollars. So that was the two-year timeframe to come up with.
Yeah.
Does that sound right, Todd?
Yep.
You don't have to have it today, but you have to have it by...
Two years.
You know, basically, the construction will be twenty twenty-three.
And that's what this resolution, it just basically says, county hereby commits to provide X amount of dollars towards this project. It's not like you're cutting the check.
Absolutely.
And you talked community foundation grants and you talked some other things that...
Open to other ideas if you guys...
That's a, that's a part of it. You're gonna, you have to come up with a fair bet.
Yep.
So later than today, we have, you have to put this in.
No later than, yeah.
So do we have to give you this number today?
Be nice, wouldn't it? So you'd get it going?
I mean, it would be nice, Rick, yes. Um, but if you wanna think about it a week?
No, I can think, think, well...
But next Monday I'll need to...
I'm just, these are all rough figures.
Submitted.
These are all rough figures. But hoping for some other funding.
Yep.
Although it's not as much as we'd like, but it still helps if it's twenty thousand here, if it's thirty thousand there, it ends up being fifty. Do you think the county's commitment of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be reasonable? Would it get to the number to get kind of where it needs to be to get the grant?
At that point, you'd be close to that twenty percent.
Yeah, with the other, with the other contributions.
And I'm hoping for some things on...
That's what, that's what he's thinking. With the other contributions, they'd get it up in that two fifty range.
That's what I'm hoping. There might be, there may be some private contributions. There's other trails that have been built. Granted, some of these private contributions have been from huge corporations and companies, but there, there could be in the two-year timeframe. Todd could do a fundraising effort or something.
Think so.
Who knows what? Granted, it was a, it was a very welcome donation for the animal shelter. That just happened the way it happened, but I, I don't, and I can't say. All I know is that there's been other very, very expensive projects, as you can see they are. Where, uh, companies, corporations, even, even individual foundations have put money towards trail, uh, buildings. And we've got two years to work with. The nice thing is if, for great luck and donations, we can, I'm just using the number of a hundred and fifty. And if there was more that came in, now we'd maybe pay the county's contribution less at that time, if we were so lucky.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we almost have to do something now if we wanna...
It's an opportunity missed.
Yeah, if we don't do something now, then you might as well write this off because no one's gonna come up with one point two million at this point in time to do anything, to anything.
Cause believe me, if we don't use it, someone else is going to.
Oh, certainly. But, and like Todd said, it'll be in a larger metropolitan area most likely. They'll just get more. In the smaller areas, we'll get nothing, but...
Cause I, I think Webster's, there, there's just like six million dollar extension that they're putting on theirs. And I'm sure that's where their funding's coming from also.
I would guess so, some of it.
I bet a part of it is. I bet a part, I'm sure they are all well aware of this opportunity as well.
Yeah.
Well, the trail's bringing in a lot of outside, not just your, you know, the community. It would actually bring people from other areas, I'm assuming.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, you're, you're talking, they'll stop at the restaurants, they'll stop and, you know, other different things too here in town they might wanna...
I got your email too about the, the ISAC magazine.
Yeah, yeah, wasn't it cool?
Did you read through that?
I didn't read through all. I just kind of skimmed it off. I just skimmed it.
There are some economic impact numbers within one of those articles that were pretty amazing.
That, I mean, I just kind of skimmed it. I didn't have time to read the whole bit. And that's what I thought. I thought...
Check that out. What you're saying is correct. Like, people don't directly pay you to use that trail, but indirectly, the community...
It comes to the community. It's good for the community.
This is amazing. It's truly amazing.
I mean, people will stop at the convenience stores, they'll stop at restaurants, they'll, you know, it just helps.
Yeah, I should've, I should've printed that off in broad, I guess. I'm not a very good salesperson, but the numbers that were quoted in there were just kind of almost fogged in my mind.
Yeah.
All right, well...
What's that resolution?
I have to say, Bruce, I was supposed to give this to you before the meeting, probably. This is my first resolution, so don't... You love me.
Okay. After all, we know it's your first grant.
Yeah, there's a, there's a spot there to fill in a dollar amount.
So what, what do we do? We know what our budget this year, we have...
It's not this year.
Yeah, we have, but we can't even, you know, put towards it.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a deal that you're gonna say...
Well, it's for budgeting your next twenty, twenty-two, I guess, twenty-three, twenty-four budget, basically.
Well, we could do it just like we did on the bridge. It's gonna be down by the dam. If we set a certain amount to try to, can't we?
Yeah.
I mean, you did what?
Thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-four for a total of a hundred, for that pedestrian bridge.
Right.
Yes.
But we're just gonna say, we're gonna try, but I guess the, the point that I don't... If we said using Eric's one fifty, um, we'll know within a few months of whether we got...
Got it or not.
Got it or not.
And then, then you gotta put it in your budget.
Then you have to start squeezing to start finding.
Yeah.
But by the same token, if we don't do it and...
And then...
So we might miss, we're gonna miss out on it probably.
It won't get done.
Right. No, it won't. It won't get done if it's up to our funds, spending one...
No, it won't. Between the conservation and the county and we just, there just isn't gonna be a one point two million dollar project at this point.
No.
But we did the same thing with the dam. The next grant. There's money there to research it and if something comes about, but it was through the bond initiative, that, again, if it flies, we have it in place.
Yeah, so then we'll have the, the project there, so when money does come along, you can apply.
Yep.
And so, I think in our conversation, this essentially gives us two budget years to come up with, set them up. And like Bruce asked the question, there's no, I mean, unfortunately, there's no guarantee to get...
No, that's actually, you know, you can pick a number that you're comfortable with, honestly.
But if we don't put a number out there, this application, you're not gonna get it. If you said, what's the additional contribution, say zero, they'd go, then you're, you know, the grant...
You're a killer file.
Be successful.
Right. Well, we can all work on, you know, um, fundraising too. I mean, there's different things that, you know, each of us could, you know, possibly do with some of this stuff to go to talk to different corporate, you know. There's, there's businesses here in town that we, each of us know that maybe we could talk to and...
I agree. I think there are two that would be pretty supportive as well.
Yeah, I do too.
Yes.
I do too. And, uh...
I, I agree with Sandy. I mean, I, I just, we talked. I really, I mean, there's no guarantee, but there's a, there's people, I, there's precedent. There's, there's a lot of bike trails in the state. The paved ones are the best. And I know there's been a lot of, you know, private money put into that, but I'm sure there was money like this to start and then they were added too, so that they could do a bigger, better project.
Yes, it's on here.
Yeah.
Right here. Approved grant resolution for Three Rivers Trail.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if you want a motion on that...
Yes, I would like it.
I would make a motion to fill the dollar amount in on that grant resolution at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I would second that.
All right, well, we have a first and a second for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar commitment towards this one or two point seven miles of paving at a one point two million dollar cost. Um, any more discussion on this topic? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, there you go, Todd.
Okay. Thank you.
We know that you will keep us informed.
Yeah, I'll let you know as soon as I...
I'm gonna write that in here, that one fifty, so it don't get changed.
Can you send that to me?
Go ahead. Now, do we need to, do we need to sign that or is there signatures?
Different things on the bottom of it.
So you're just...
Trish, I think you need to fill the bottom of this out.
U's and A's and others.
Auditor at the bottom.
If you wanna send that, I can complete the top part with the, what you call, the number, resolution number.
Okay.
And bring it back in and have them sign it.
Okay.
I will go to the office and send it your way.
Thanks, Todd. I know, like I said, they threw this out there and...
Five minutes, I'm scrambling.
I know, I can just appreciate that, but, and do.
I don't know. There's no guarantees.
Unfortunately, there, there totally is. I mean, we appreciate you doing it and bringing it on a...
Quick turnaround.
Quick turnaround, but I guess the best news is if they give us anything.
Denied, I guess.
We have...
Learned something there, process, and you've got some numbers.
And, you know, hopefully we get this and get it done and we see how much people enjoy it and maybe pave some more.
Right.
They don't. They don't.
You and Bill be fighting for it.
Yeah, you know what? I thought we could just change it to a road and then...
One lane. A one-main road.
Nice, Todd, one main road to be open.
Yeah, one road. Pulling drainage down. All right.
Well, let's just get your phones ringing.
Yeah, no kidding. All right, well...
Motion to go under drainage, duck it.
At that time.
Duck it.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
We are, uh, in drainage. I'm gonna get Kim and we'll talk over this thing with Webster County. See you in a little bit.
Um, but, quick question, that redistricting thing, do you know when they're gonna start meeting? Cause I've got some interest that they don't know when the meetings would actually start.
Um, within the next month, they should have one.
Okay, next month, okay.
I mean...
I just saw that.
Do you want, oh...
Yeah, we're already in drainage.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, that's interesting. But it's amazing, the, when you have a good trail, there's dinky little towns that have stuff, if that trail goes through their town. It becomes real. The people that go, like Sandy was saying, it's not, you know, some of these trails, they charge you a dollar a day or two dollars a day to ride on it. So, you know, that's not gonna sustain much. It helps, but...
We just need to make sure that we post signs up there on the highway. Cause that's flat across there in the town of Blowing Spot. Somebody riding the trail for the first time.
They wanna have that highway there.
Rubber, rubber, rubber.
Yeah, you say you take up strit, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Good morning, Kim.
Good morning.
Okay, what do you have for us here from Webster County?
Well, we're actually going to start out with the joint district, uh, with us and Wright County. They have, they're going to levy on two dash twenty-eight and Humboldt County shares one eighty-three fifty-two. All they're asking is for our signatures on that. Their, their work order is attached to this that Eagle Trenching did. So I just need everyone's signatures on that.
Has that work already been completed?
Yes. Yeah, that's just work that, she just sent me the work order on Friday, that that was completed and they're gonna levy for that.
How much is this thirty-one four that, uh, is ours?
That's a different one.
That's entirely different. This one, this one is the original copy that I just need everybody's signatures on for the joint approval for the levy. That's entirely different, this one, this one is the original copy that I just need everybody's signatures on for the joint approval for the levy.
Is that the DD 2-28, that, that one right there, is that what you're talking about?
Right, that's the 2-28 Humboldt Wright.
Okay, okay.
Over there south of Renwick?
Yeah.
Well, the good news is Humboldt shares $183.
Right. Oh, that's this?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm like.
It must be a very, very tiny part of that district.
Well, Wright County is, uh, the toll is what, 654, 655, so Wright County's is 471, and Humboldt's is 183, so it isn't like we're breaking the bank for.
No, it looked to me like it's repairing a bull kid.
Repairing an 18-inch outlet at the ditch of Liberty Township Southeast, Section 19. I'm good with.
Yeah, they need your signatures on that.
Do we need to, do we need to prove that?
I'll make that motion to approve the joint district levy with 2-28 Humboldt-Wright.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, so now we can sign?
Yep.
Yep.
Very much a technicality.
Yeah, there you go.
I thought it was for more than that, they just, just one project, they just, okay, fine.
I thought it was for this other one.
I thought it was, yeah, you, well, it was two different deals there.
But we had to address it officially for an approval.
Okay. Now we got this one with, uh, Webster County.
Yeah, for the discussion, I received the official email from Crimmins Law Firm that the work had been completed, and they had actually received legal notice from Union Pacific that they had completed the project, they did have an inspector on site, and the last page is actually the completion photo. And at this point, thank you, we have, I have just written on the front copy what our, our total amount is, now, this is outside of the actual contract work, we have fees that we incurred from McClure Engineering, and then Crimmins Law, and those are the totals that I wrote and read on your front copy.
This is above and beyond the repairs work that was done.
Right, this is above and beyond.
Now, is this our portion, or is this the total?
This is the total.
Okay.
And I'm not sure.
So they're basically just making us aware of these added costs that are in this project?
These are all the invoices that Crystal has sent me from Webster County, and these are the totals.
Okay.
So at this point, I just need to discuss with the board how we're going to approach payment for this, is this something that we're going to levy the entire district for, the $31,489? Or is this something that you go back and discuss with the railroad for full payment, partial payment, have you ever negotiated partial payments?
Uh, I don't know what percentage of the repairs they are paying, but I would think that portion would apply to this bill also.
Maybe not.
The railroad is paying 100% of the repair cost, but they don't, they're, I don't, to my knowledge, they're not even aware of the engineering costs or the legal fees.
Well, it says right here, "UP manager, bridge maintenance, and others, and other, and our engineering department coordinated with the drainage district engineering consultant and the contractor hired by UP to complete the tile repair work at UP's expense."
Right, but I'm assuming that's just, that's just for the cost of the repairs, that was 100% for the railroad.
Right, I am gonna take a wild guess that for this total of 31,49,42, if the joint district's extra expense is gonna be levied as such, because the railroad's not gonna pay that.
And that's legal fee with Crimmins, that was to get the, where, well, you just do the.
That was the back and forth, yeah, that was, that was all, this has been going on for how long?
Two years, yeah.
There you go.
I think it was right after.
That's, uh, UP's bill.
You can send it to them, go on, you can ask.
They don't pay it.
You can ask the law firm, indoor, the engineering company about that, but, uh, I'm gonna take a wild guess that, uh, they're gonna send it right back. Yeah, like Sandy said, it was the expense to get to, and they actually agreed, and they, as Dave just said, paid for the repair, did the repair.
Yeah, after we did the tolling.
It was the lead county, unless it was they are, they are.
I thought Webster was.
What's, what's their thoughts?
Have we talked to them on this part?
No.
I, I just received all this information and just printed it out on Friday, that, um, Crystal was, Crystal had sent me all the invoicing on this project, and then on Friday, she said that there's more legal invoicing coming in.
More than this?
Yeah.
Well, in fact. I, I just respond to them, keep us informed, and we'll have a meeting when they get it all together, and.
Have a joint meeting.
Have a joint meeting with them, and.
If you wanted to ask the question, you can call Dan at McClure and just say, hey, we, these bills, uh, do you have any expla, do you have any explanation? Maybe he does, maybe he doesn't, but he might, you know.
And ask him what the chances are, if we submit them with that, if, because if the.
Railroad will pay for them.
If the railroad looks at your thought of, this was getting them to do it and to pay for it.
Right.
And if they look at it as they did what they agreed to, there's no sense in going any further, this is gonna be.
I'm shocked as heck if they actually paid for 100% of the repairs.
Right, but McClure Engineering has been, you know, dealing with this from the onset, so that's why I said they'd be the easiest to get a hold of, and probably the easiest to ask, what they're, how they see it, that might give you a more clear explanation. And then like Rick said, it's a joint, so we're gonna have to probably have that meeting for it all, word away, but.
Just at a certain percentage of it's gonna be levied to Humboldt County.
Right, we've got that percentage, right, and in the meantime, if Kim found out there was potentially some more bills coming, like, or, hopefully not too much more, but.
I have one additional one submitted Friday for another $297.
On this project?
Right, and that, that should be the last, um. Unless the railroad contacts them.
Well, I guess they would do that, and.
I'd ask to give a little more clarification on it.
Yeah, ask the questions, and.
Ask them to.
And then we're gonna have to have a joint.
Have to answer the meeting, will they?
Yeah.
Get all the bills compiled, and then.
Get the total figure.
Yeah, so you can get it levied out correctly, and.
Because we want it to be done ASAP. I would think.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to show you all the figures and where we're at right now, and the only final confirmation I have was that the railroad was agreeing to pay 100% for the repairs, and none of the additional fees were mentioned. So I didn't know if I should contact the railroad.
No, no.
No?
You can't, down to Webster County.
Yeah, Webster, yeah.
Yeah, they're handling it down there, um, you just respond, you showed us the bills, and we'll have a joint meeting when all the bills are in, and.
Okay, very good.
Uh, when it's finalized.
Might ask them what it, it, what Union Pacific is going to put anything towards these, these bills, see what their response is.
Yeah, see what Webster's thoughts are of turning them into Union Pacific.
But we wanna move it. We wanna move it as long and fast as we can, so that we can get to the.
Get it levied out.
Levied out.
Right, and this is where, um, Crystal received an email from Ryan at Crimmins, and she said she did ask if Ryan thought that I should be sending Union Pacific the total of these bills for his fees and for Dan's, which I'm assuming Dan is with.
McClure.
McClure, yeah. So I was assuming she was turning everything over to me.
Well, we're not the lead county, so I don't know why they would do that, I don't believe we are.
I don't think.
In 39.
Yeah.
We have jo, we, for the joint district, we have control over.
Do we?
Is it H-W? Humboldt-West, or the Western-Humboldt?
It's Humboldt, it's H-Web.
Then, then we are the lead.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we do have, we do have control over that district.
Because I thought when we met on the phone the last time, didn't you share it? I'm almost positive when we were at the joint meeting on the.
Absolutely, that was the tolling agreement?
When we agreed to do this, but you were the, you were in the meeting.
Yeah, when we extended the toll.
Oh, it's just that the work is being done in Webster.
Yeah, the work is being done.
They're turning all the invoices in from McClure and Crimmins, so everybody's in Webster County, it's just that she's been sent all the bills from McClure, and she has now forward, forwarded everything to me.
Okay, I thought it was all done in Webster County.
Well, but I can, I can still suggest that we have a joint meeting with Webster County, and we'll just, we'll get everything finalized.
And ask them if that's what their thoughts were, should send these bills on, or if they think those should be sent to the farmers.
Because even, that's right, they basically took it, I mean, they're the ones that initiated.
Yeah, they were, they were running the project.
They were running it, that's right, I remember that now, they're running it, and.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have for drainage, and then I have a few invoices that will require some approval.
Okay. Should we go out of drainage then?
Motion to go out, second.
We have a first, second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
We are out of drainage and back in regular session, so we'll get Trish back in here, and we'll wrap things up.
Okay. I will leave these for signatures, you have your initials here, just come back in after.
Yeah.
If you wanna look at a picture that doesn't show up in the big picture, pass around, there is the tile, take just, just look at that, from Dan Heidemeyer.
So they, did they, um, you know, did they bore and shove a pipe under it?
Didn't say, he just said, we now have a concrete connection underneath the right away, you can see that, 'cause you don't see.
Oh, yeah, you see the one, the new one coming underneath there, and it looks like it's concrete.
Yep.
Mm-hmm, probably reinforced concrete.
Yep.
Well, it was, it was just right under the dang culverts.
It was, yep, so, I mean, I thought maybe they were moving it, but they evidently didn't. No, but the railroad took care of it, and they expect that the construction cost, you can ask all these questions, but that, I'm a bit shocked.
I am too, but, so, I'm.
Will they pay it?
Yeah, if they have, if we only have to pay the $31,500 bucks, that would be relatively cheap, considering this.
It all was done.
Yeah. Okay. Welcome back.
You wanna do the claims?
Let's begin our claims.
Thank you.
I had the general at 430, 955.55, and the drainage at 941, even, most of the pay.
That's same as I got, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, um, now we have a .5 members to the temporary redistricting, redistricting commission.
Did you, uh, find out any on date wise when this stuff will be?
Um, looking at Peggy's letter that she sent following the appointment of these, um, it just recommended that they meet within the next month, it'll be like a 30-minute meeting, and then they'll sit patiently for a while.
What do you mean by sit patiently for a while, 'cause I have somebody that's interested, but they can't do anything until after June, so that's, you know, timing wise.
That was tricky, they'll have to meet, the first thing, they'll have to meet in the next month, but, um, after that, we have to wait until, how about this, this fall?
They probably have to form their commission within the next month.
All right.
That'd be my guess.
Yeah, and they're behind on some of the stuff.
Have we got very, very many changes in the county?
Population wise.
I don't know.
Haven't seen that big, haven't seen that big shift to the west side or the east side?
To the north.
To the north or south?
No, um, they haven't gotten that out yet, so we don't really know. And I see also that Peggy has herself assigned to the commission to, in order to be able to direct them, but, yeah.
So you're volunteering yourself again to do that?
Yeah, I suppose.
Okay, that's great, so do you have any names yet?
No.
No.
We do for the Democratic side.
Okay, so that's two, we need a total of five.
Three after that.
Yeah, and I, I have, I talked with Carl, he said he can do it.
Okay.
So now we're up to three, so if we can come up with two more.
Well, I just text the person who's interested to say that, hey, the first meeting would just be 30 minutes, and then it wouldn't be till this fall, so. Well, hopefully I'll hear back real quick.
Anybody else, any?
Well, that was one of my suggestions, um, with Carl, I guess I forgot who else, the other one I sent you.
Janelle Ayers, I think, and TC Loving are gonna do.
Oh, okay.
Democratic, yeah.
And so Janelle would be great, because she's got some insight to kinda how it works, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, TC Loving's good too, so.
Yeah, TC will be a good person, both of them, yeah.
I don't know, do you want? I can't think of anybody offhand that would. I, do you think we nominate one of yourselves?
I would think that'd be a conflict of interest.
I would too.
What's that?
But, I mean, I think it'd be yours.
If one of us was on it, I think it would be a conflict of interest, but maybe not. If one of us was on it, I think it would be a conflict of interest, but maybe not.
What is it? I can't remember what it says on-
You can have one.
One?
One supervisor.
Oh, you can.
I mean, it's just-
As, as one supervisor is part of that, so part, man, I can't even talk today, part of that five, is that what you're saying?
And then I believe Peggy was part of the five also. I think we're good. And that's- It's all new, so I really don't know myself what to do, so.
Mm-hmm.
Just from the directions of the-
There's any possibility that Peggy herself-
That's just what I was thinking.
Would serve on this.
And she-
Yep, been four months. Well, this isn't-
Well, it's voluntary.
Yeah, this is voluntary, this has nothing to do with-
It's all voluntary.
This has nothing to do with official, I mean-
Yeah, that'd be a good one to ask.
Yeah.
That would be Elisa, but she'd have a little knowledge.
She's been through it before and then you mentioned another person that had been through it before.
That's a good thought.
What's that?
That's a good thought, Eric.
Yeah.
I would ask her.
Yeah, she might do it.
So, we need one more person.
I thought it was you.
Do you want me to do that then?
Yes, you need to sit in on it so that you know for the next-
Cause they're gonna have to kinda minister it.
You're still there 10 years from now.
So I guess we'll need a formal action in that.
One of these may be tentative and Sandy's waiting for a response, that I see and-
Yep, I mean, because, yeah, it's all up to you.
Okay.
We have to have this appointed by the 15th, so.
What does that leave us?
Well, it leaves us in the middle of the week.
Yeah, in the middle of the week.
But then you'll at least-
Yep, I'll, I should have an answer and if that person won't do it, I can, that'd be interesting, I'd be willing to do it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll put you down as a backup.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's, let's put those six or seven names down and we'll get five out of those.
Yeah, I would certainly ask Peggy Rice.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
I would certainly ask her.
Call down and, okay, we got six there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well-
Six and maybe seven.
Maybe, yes.
Okay, so?
Okay, let's, uh-
So you got that for the redistricting. Now we need that transfer, so we're at-
We need a vote.
I was gonna say, we need a, a motion.
Yeah, I need the As and NAs and-
Okay.
You wanna read those names first and then, you can leave her off or that person off, so let's-
We need to read the names or do we just need to say that we-
I don't wanna mention any names, you know.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's what I was trying to work on.
That's what I'm saying, do you need these names silent or can we just say as printed?
Yes, printed, please, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the temporary county redistricting for the 2109 resolution where the names is printed.
From that list.
From that list.
We'll get the five from the list printed?
Yeah.
I second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that was all ayes, is that right?
Yeah.
Correct.
From our top secret list.
Well, you're gonna have to tell me who it is, cause it's not top secret, it's public information.
She's-
No, I don't, I don't wanna mention a name here.
We heard it fixed, I don't-
I understand that, but I mean, if you're gonna, I don't know, if you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to make, okay, you approved this list, but then you gotta winnow it down to the five people that are gonna serve on it.
Correct.
Two people we haven't talked to, so I'm throwing them at the, at the board.
Mercy of the wolves here.
And hopefully they're gonna agree.
We'll call Peggy after the meeting and see if she'll do it. Okay, now we have, uh, we got that done.
Transfer.
Transfer money.
Do our other things here.
Okay, the transfer is for, to pay the debt service, or I need that we're, oh, what is it? It was for the loan payment for the general obligation loan. And that coming up has to be done in the next month, so.
That was what total, 40,000?
40,000.
I make a motion to transfer 40,000 from the capital projects fund to the debt service fund.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have-
County health rates.
Approved county health insurance renewal rates for 22, fiscal 22, and I think you all got a copy of the different levels that we were looking at, the six or seven percent, um, on the email.
Yeah.
And, um, it was kind of a consensus that the six percent is kinda what everybody was in favor of. Um, the 5.38 is actual premium cost, so that 6,200 sort of go into the help or self-funding balance. So I'd look for a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to set the county health rates at six percent.
Number first?
A second.
Second, Sandy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. All right, looks like that pretty well cleaned everything else up. We got committee reports.
Okay. Wednesday night, it's for me was that the conservation board meeting at 5:30. Um, a reminder for this Wednesday will be the mobile food pantry we need done for Fair Down, same time, same channel. Starts at, is it 4:30 Dave? I think that's when it is.
Yeah, like five they open the door, 4:30 they open the door.
4:30 and it goes as long as they have food, so I'm gonna-
Get there and like-
I'm hopefully gonna get a hold of Donovan and put that on the community calendar so that the last couple of times we've had, make some frantic phone calls to get people coming through to finish up the last.
Let you sign that one.
Yep, and they come in through the north gate, drive down along the, the racetrack, make a loop, the boxes, stuff is put in their vehicle and they don't get out of their cars, so it's pretty quick and painless, so.
Hit the button, open the truck, we'll throw in whatever you want and there we go.
Probably goes a lot faster too, don't it?
Yeah, yeah, five, 5:30, we're done.
Yeah.
Says six o'clock, but we've run out of food by then.
And she's been ordering for 140 to 150 families is what they've been ordering, so that's all I have.
Okay, all I have also was Wednesday, the fifth, was the conservation board meeting. Did my notes make sense?
Yeah.
You done?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You sure?
I, I know it, that's all I had.
Are you positive?
I am positive. My first week of the month is always a lighter one.
Yeah, all I had was the Wednesday conservation meeting.
I was not able to attend that meeting, so I did not have any official extra corrective meetings.
It must have been a good meeting.
It was a very good meeting.
And, uh, I had the one on Wednesday also, at 5:30. That's all I had.
Oh, strictly about the dam information?
Mm-hmm.
Or what was it gonna do to it?
Okay.
Off with any-
Basically, they are going to have an engineering study done to see what with a cost of repairing the gates, uh, do the backfilling the dam with rocks, maybe an upper bladder to raise and lower the levels of the river, um, some trail work.
Dredge.
Dredge cost, so we have different options to see what we can do.
First thing is get an engineer to inspect it.
And, yeah, they're gonna come in to a dam and inspect it.
Save it or not.
See if it can be repaired, put it that way.
Okay. So-
So he'll be probably coming-
He gave us a-
Oh, thank you.
Probably coming to get some of the-
Two options.
Money that they, we had set aside in order to-
To-
We're gonna save the-
Basically, you gotta get all this information together so you can apply for a grant.
For sure.
Kinda like our Murray Bridge out there, now trying to get her ducks in a row, so.
Yep. So essentially, Bruce mentioned that maybe that they're gonna dip into some of the money that was-
Yeah, that approved of engineering.
And actually then move forward with some of these.
So we can find out what some of these options are costing.
Yep.
And then look at their options, look at the cost and proceed from there.
They did discuss a couple of options for engineering, but they felt comfortable with the engineer that's maybe-
Yeah.
And the group that they've been working with because of the fact that you go to someone else, you got-
You're starting from scratch.
You're starting all over.
So there's an engineering group that is familiar.
What she is, is working through.
Okay.
And that was the company-
That was the group that did that, that study.
Okay, yeah, you read through all that, okay.
Yeah, cause she went, she was here, what was that, three weeks ago?
Yeah, three, four weeks ago, yeah.
So they made the motion to use her group and I guess we felt comfortable with, with their decisions were because they've been dealing with her for, with them for-
I mean, they, they think she's very responsive. When they got questions, she gets back, gets back to them and tell them.
Excellent.
So I guess that was what they, they made a motion to proceed forward and I guess that what we can do is follow, so.
Well, good. Yeah, I-
It was interesting, me.
Excellent. No, I had something come up and I'm glad everybody else made it and that sounds like a logical next step.
Mm-hmm.
Having the money, you know, approved to do that.
Yeah.
If you don't, I mean, there's, we get down to Sandy's list that she had at number four, no action, so you hear things up.
Kicked the can down.
Either there's something and it's been talked about long enough and I think that's pretty logical, uh, next step.
Unity is behind it and that's a big thing right there, so.
Yeah, I think that's a logical, you know, direction. Find out. Good. Thanks for that.
Is there any other stuff for us, Trish?
Three board members, board supervisors.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Uh, yeah, that's-
And Kim?
Okay. Do we have a lot of, uh, public there then?
No, no.
Nothing else?
I'm right over there. Oh, do you got something?
Uh, just a quick FYI, a couple things, uh, from our man, uh, Ricky Furus, um, which he contacted Kim, I believe, in the last week or sometime last week, maybe middle of last week, uh, they're doing their prescribed brush control in the area, drainage areas, so they always, let us know, like I told Kim, I said, sometimes if I finally see somebody out in the middle of their section-
Yeah, on a four wheeler, they wonder what's going on.
Yeah, so they're following through on that program and, uh, as far as road right-of-way program, starting in the north half of the county, they will be traveling all of these block tops here just coming week. So, I mean, that's a little more self-explanatory. If someone sees the truck's way in the right of way, they don't usually call in, makes it, they can figure out pretty quickly. So, they're getting, he's getting started on that because finally we've got obviously some rain and we've got a few deets in the time, he said the timing is right on that. So, just getting to start on the right of way weed control for this season.
Okay.
Just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that.
Okay. Anything else for the board's information?
I think you're good now, babe.
Okay.
Okay, we got a first, second, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned at 9:55.
All right.